I'd like to call the City of Muskegon City Commission for May 22, 2012, to order. It's my pleasure to welcome Pastor Tim Cross from Living Word Church to lead us in prayer to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Would you bow your heads with me, please? Lord Jesus, your men came to you one time and said, "Lord, teach us to pray," and you gave us a model prayer. And I pray that prayer today for our city and for this meeting. We start off by recognizing that you are Father in heaven. You're the Creator of all things. You're the one that gave life to this universe, this earth, and everyone on it. We honor your name, your name Jehovah, El Shaddai, Adonai, and the name above every name, Jesus. And, Father, we pray, let your kingdom come. Let your kingdom, culture, and influence come to our city and to our region. That kingdom of love, that kingdom of kindness, that kingdom of honor and integrity and righteousness. Let your kingdom come. And let your will be done. Father, I pray that in this meeting, your will would be done here in Muskegon as it is in heaven. And, Father, I pray that you would give us this day what we need for this day, our daily bread. Father, I pray that you would give the wisdom, you would give the insight, you would give the clarity that is needed in this meeting today for each of the county commissioners, for each person that'll be speaking, that, Father God, that you would give each of them what they need in this meeting today. But as well, Father, as we look to you as our need meter, that, Father, that we would have that recognition that you are the one that meets our needs. And, Father God, I pray in Jesus' name that you would forgive each of us of our trespasses, our sins, and that each of us here would forgive those that have wronged us, done us wrong, where we feel offended or hurt, that we would let those things go. And, Father, I pray that you would not lead us into temptation, but you would deliver each of us from evil, from evil influences, evil bad companions. And that, Father, finally, that we would recognize that you deserve all the honor, the glory. All of it belongs to you. And, Father, we thank you that you've given us life and that you've loved us. And we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Cross. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Garland?
Here.
Commissioner Waringo?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Mayor Wilmington?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Thank you. First items on the agenda are honors and awards. Is Carly Baldus here? Carly Baldus?
Maybe later.
Okay. We'll just wait a second. So then, I think what I'll do is I'll ask Ms. Fair if you can come up, and we'll take this off of the consent agenda. As long as you're here. Who do we have here?
Carolyn Madden.
Carolyn Madden, from the library. So, this is in recognition, let me read this proclamation if I could for you. It's, for those of you within the audience, it's on the consent agenda. Whereas Hackley Public Library has been named a national literary landmark based on its relationship with Verna Artema Vadovin. Wow, I've got that right. And whereas Verna Artema Vadovin is an award-winning author of over thirty children's books and collections of stories, including the Call the Cop Medal-winning book, Why Mosquito's Buzz in People's Ears. And whereas Verna Artema Vadovin was a renowned Muskegon County resident, teacher, and Muskegon Chronicle reporter who was known as Muskegon Story Lady, and whereas a bronze plaque will be unveiled during a community celebration on June 12, 2012, designating Hackley Public Library as Michigan's seventh official literary landmark. Now therefore be resolved that I, Steve Wilmington, speaking on behalf of the City Commission and citizens of Muskegon, hereby proclaim that Hackley Library is a literary landmark and ask all citizens of Muskegon County to celebrate Hackley Public Library's place in our country's literary heritage. Marty, this is quite an honor, and it's really an honor for the community as well as Hackley Library. We're very, very proud of what we have at Hackley Library, and certainly we're proud of you as the director and the award that you won earlier this year. So on behalf of all of the citizens, we present to you this proclamation. Thank you very much. Thank you. Do you care to say anything?
Verna Artema is famous nationally and internationally. Most of us don't read children's books all the time, but the children do, and adults read those books with her. And this is such an honor. We are, I think there are fifty national literary landmarks. We're the seventh one in the state of Michigan. So this is Carolyn Madden, who wrote the actual application and nominated the Hackley Library to be a literary landmark. And I know she would like me to tell you.
Or you could tell them yourself.
That the dedication ceremony will be Tuesday, June 12, at four o'clock in the afternoon. We have Bernie Houseward, who was a children's librarian, coming back. We have a play from a group of students from NIM School who will be performing one of Verna Artema's stories. And it's going to be a special event. You have all been invited personally. I hope you can come, and I hope that everyone listening can come too. Thank you very much, Mayor Wilmington and Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'll ask again, is Carly Baldus here? Well, seeing that she isn't, and we're privileged tonight to have the Superintendent of Public Schools, John Feltzke. Maybe he would come up along with board member Cindy Larson of the Muskegon Public Schools.
She'd love to.
Perhaps you could come up, and then we can share this with the audience, and you can share it then with the students and Ms. Baldus. For those of you in the audience, Muskegon High School's Theater Group was awarded an award, a national award, and this is a resolution to recognize that. Whereas Muskegon High School's Theater Group was one of more than one thousand applicants to apply for the SMASH Make a Musical Contest, directed toward underserved schools with resources to put on a musical. And whereas finalists were chosen based on their financial need, the school's ability to sustain a musical theater program, and the school's ability to rally support from the community. And whereas Muskegon High School is one of thirty finalists, and ultimately one of ten schools throughout the nation that will participate in a fully staged musical. And whereas the Muskegon High School's Theater Program will receive instruction from two nationally recognized master theater instructors who will give professional development workshops with teachers and students in the fall. Muskegon High School will be given the rights to produce a show for the Eye Theatrics Collection of Musicals for student performances, and will put on a production that will be available to the public. Now therefore be resolved that the City Commission commends Carly Baldus, Theater Director, for her hard work and determination to offer this great opportunity to the students of Muskegon High School's Theater Program. The City Commission's recognized the talents of the students of the Muskegon High School Theater Program and the impact Ms. Baldus has made on each of them. We look forward to the upcoming production by our students of Muskegon High School. So, once again, we're very, very proud of the work that the public school system has done for our students and residents. And please pass on to Ms. Baldus and the students our congratulations on behalf of the citizens of Muskegon. Wonderful, two gray awards. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk. Summary request: To approve minutes of the May 7 Commission Work Session Meeting and the May 8 City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Liquor license request from Dolgin Corp. LLC, 381 East Laketon, City Clerk. Summary request: The liquor control commission is seeking local recommendation on a request from Dolgin Corp. LLC, a chain applicant, for a new SDM license for 381 East Laketon Dollar General store. Staff recommendation: All departments are recommending approval. Permanent traffic order to install yield signs on Le Buff at Minor Public Works. Summary request: To authorize staff to install two yield signs on north and south approaches of Le Buff at Minor. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to install the yield signs on Le Buff. Consideration of bids for City Hall tuck pointing engineering. Summary request: Award a contract for the tuck pointing and sealing of the City Hall building to Kent Companies out of Grand Rapids since they were the lowest responsible bidder with a bid price of $37,925. Staff recommendation: Award the contract to Kent Companies. Vacation of Walk Street between Delano Avenue and Young Avenue. Planning and economic development. Summary request: Staff is requesting for the vacation of Walk Street between Delano Avenue and Young Avenue with all utility easement rights to be retained. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends vacation of the street with the condition that all utility easements rights be retained. Committee recommendation: The planning commission recommended vacation of the street at their May 10 meeting with the condition that all utility easements rights be retained. Concession contract for City of Muskegon Parks Public Works. Summary request: Staff is asking permission to enter into a one-year contractual agreement with Tom Williams of Messy Dogs at Pier Marquette, Cypherth, and McGrath Parks located within the city of Muskegon to sell hot dogs and other minor snacks from a mobile cart. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to enter into a concession agreement with Mr. Williams. Transmittal of 2012-2013 Proposed Budget, City Manager. Summary request: At this time, staff is transmitting to the City Commission the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2012-2013, which starts July 1, 2012. Both hard copy and electronic versions of the budget have been distributed to commissioners. Additionally, the budget is available for public inspection on the city's website and at the City Clerk's office or Hackley Public Library. The proposed budget will be reviewed in detail with staff at the June 11 Work Session. A public hearing on the budget will be held at the regular Commission meeting the following evening. The city ordinance requires that the budget be adopted by the City Commission on or before the second Commission meeting in June.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. Item B void.
Item B.
Item F, the concession contract.
Any others? Vice Mayor Garland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented minus item B and item F.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Garland, supported by Commissioner German, to approve the consent agenda as read less items B and F. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garland?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Item A, please.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Dinner's cooking. Item B, Commissioner Turnquist.
No.
Larry, I'm sorry.
That's right. I would move that we approve the liquor license request from Dolgin Corp. LLC for 381 East Laketon.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Turnquist, to approve the liquor license request from Dolgin Corp. LLC, 381 East Laketon. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. Perhaps I should have made the opposite motion. I intend to vote against this motion. I'm sure this is a fine business, but there are a number of liquor stores in the immediate area, and I've gotten a pretty significant feedback from the neighborhood indicating that they don't feel that this is an appropriate location for an additional liquor store outlet. And there is concern about basically how it would be handled. So I just wanted to express that and why I'm voting no on this particular motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hood?
I tend to agree with Larry. I just misunderstood the motion.
The motion was to approve, so we need to vote no.
Okay. The motion was to approve.
Correct.
Okay.
However, so a vote for a no vote will deny.
All right. Any other discussion? Questions?
Where exactly is this located off Laketon? What's the crossroad?
I think it's right there at Wood Street.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's the old close.
Okay.
Close to the neighborhood.
Okay.
Too close to the neighborhood.
And it's a Dollar General.
I know.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
No.
Commissioner Hood?
No.
Commissioner Spataro?
No.
Commissioner German?
No.
Vice Mayor Garland?
No.
Commissioner Waringo?
No.
Commissioner Turnquist?
No.
Motion is denied.
Commissioner Spataro, I don't know if you're interested, but I've been advised by council that we should have a motion to deny them.
Okay. I would move that we deny the request for liquor license for Dolgin Corp. at 381 East Laketon Avenue.
Second. From Dolgin Corp.? You said for. From Dolgin Corp. Oh, I'm sorry. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to deny the request for liquor license request from Dolgin Corp. LLC, 381 East Laketon. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garland?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, Commissioner Turnquist.
I need to ask a couple of questions, probably one major question. We do have a...
Commissioner, you want, can we put a motion on the floor, and then we can get into the discussion part of it?
I would move to accept the concession contract for Messy Dogs with the City of Muskegon for 2012.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, supported by Vice Mayor Garland, to approve this concession contract with Tom Williams of Messy Dogs from the City of Muskegon Parks. Commissioner Turnquist?
The reason I'm questioning that is that we do have a permanent small food shop down on Pier Marquette. And I'm just wondering, I've seen the pictures of the concession stand. They look outstanding. I don't have any problem with that, but the location of where the food cart would be would be a concern. And I think someone mentioned that McGrath Park, there may be a conflict. I'm not sure of that one. But that would be my question on what's going to happen on that. Where would they be located? Would they have any limits?
We did not talk specific terms as to where the exact location will be on any of the parks. However, there had been a verbal communication that we don't want to have conflicting businesses, if you will. So there had been a discussion that you would stay away from those businesses, and we'd be more than happy to establish in writing, if you will. If you give us, if you give staff authorization to enter into an agreement with Messy Dog, we can stipulate that they be within no closer than 500 feet of existing business if that is the desire.
I could accept that, yeah.
We can do that.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call. Pardon me.
Should the motion be amended to include that 500 feet?
You can do that, or we can just have staff do it. It's up to you. If you'd like to amend it, we can...
I'd like to put it in the motion. Mend the motion to include the 500-foot restriction. And I would accept that and second it.
The motion has been amended to approve concession contract for the City of Muskegon with Tom Williams of Messy Dogs at Pier Marquette, Cypherth, and McGrath Parks to be no closer than 500, 500 feet from any existing concession in those areas. Is that fine?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garland?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business, please.
CJ's on the Beach, City Clerk. Summary request: CJ's on the Beach, 1601 Beach Street, ask commission to reconsider the renewal of their liquor license.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to excuse myself from the discussion of this and turn it over to the Vice Mayor and... Commissioners, at the last minute, unless you want to...
I have to put a motion on the floor so we can have some discussion.
True. Yeah. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. I would move that we deny the request by CJ's on the Beach to reconsider the renewal of their liquor license until all fees and taxes owed to the City of Muskegon are paid per existing city policy.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Spataro and seconded by Commissioner Hood to deny the consideration of the renewal for the liquor license for CJ's at the beach until all financial obligations have been met with the City of Muskegon. Mr. Manager, could you give us some background, please?
At the last City Commission meeting, you had some information, but had some questions that you wanted clarification on, and wanted some additional information, which we have provided you. So hopefully you have a clearer picture on the fees, the revenues that are, obligations are owed to the City of Muskegon. And we're here to answer any questions you have. And I'm sure that there's representation from the owners as well. Ken Grant is here to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Questions from the Commissioners?
I'll just put this right through.
Okay. Is there any obligation here? Any obligation?
Mr. Grant, was there anything else that staff would like to add, anything that's wanted to like?
No. What you have before you was the total amount owed in the May, sixteen thousand two seventy eight sixty. I updated that number. And it hasn't changed since May 10.
Ms. Osborne, you're available again this evening. Is there any other information you'd like to present to the Commission?
I think you probably have, you know, you have the information from Ken. You know, we came here hoping that you would allow us more time to resolve the issue. And apparently your decision has been that that's not an option. I guess I would like to thank everybody in the community who has supported us. Hopefully, we can find somebody to purchase so that it's not just another empty building sitting here in Muskegon, which seems to be happening too frequently. And hopefully, we can figure something out for the Catamaran Regatta, which is scheduled in August. I'm not sure what they're going to do, or if they're going to take that to some other venue. But I guess, thank you for your consideration.
We do have some members of the public at the session this evening that would request some input. Mr. Thomas Weatherby, did you want to address the Commission, sir? If you would approach the microphone and please give your name and your residence address, please.
My name's Tom Weatherby, and I live at 2075 Holiday Drive, Wyoming, Michigan. I live and work in Grand Rapids, but I'm originally from Muskegon. I, along with a group of friends, have been going to Pier Marquette Beach for as long as I can remember. We like, we like that Muskegon has a place on the beach where we can go and stop, have a drink, something to eat, even listen to some music. It's quite unique to have this on the beach. And, but we are a little frustrated because we've watched owners come and go over thirty-seven years. They have failed through no lack of their effort to make this a successful business. It is clear that something is not working. Muskegon has tried to promote itself and the beach with events like pro volleyball, tall ships, and even polo on the beach this summer. Yet it seems to be setting, setting this business up to fail. Just look at its history. If even, if ever there was a business that Muskegon should want to succeed, this is it. Muskegon should be doing everything it can to help this business succeed. I hope you can step back, look at the big picture, and come up with a solution that can change the course of the last thirty-seven years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherby. Mr. Jennings, did you want to address the Commission, sir? And again, sir, if you could give your name and your residence address, please.
My name is Robert Jennings. I live about six months of the year at 3553 Marita Viewpoint. That's in the Harbor Town Development, and it's a stone's throw from the empty CJ's. First, I apologize. I didn't show out one of these forms on May 22. I took a lot more than my three minutes, so I will be as brief as I can.
Okay, the timing, please, sir, are watching.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Mayor Rutherford, I feel, Wilmington, I feel that every agenda that you folks bring to the public should have a section on what have we done to foster employment in Muskegon, okay? Okay. When towns are interesting, they attract people, not just locally, but from far away. They spend money, and of course, its tourist input of dollars go directly into the community. And the job-creating mechanism is a small business owner. The efficiency of the operations of small businesses is without question of great value to our economy. They require a little local government in terms of services. They have no tax base of fluff. They hire people and expect them to work, and they succeed or fail on their own initiative and their decisions, for the most part. However, when decisions essential to being successful are made by others, and the control of the decision-making process is voided, then essential control is severely jeopardized and compromised. And all we have to do is go in any direction from this building, and we have scores of empty, dilapidated buildings. American people are disgusted watching political types play chicken with the nation's hijacked economy. So when there are those taxes and roadblocks that thwart operations, small businesses then cannot provide workers wages to buy those goods and services, people are laid off, out of work, putting more people on government assistance, and you have a vicious cycle of unemployment and people then looking for help, which is not always forthcoming. Which brings us to CJ's on the beach. Small businesses of less than ten employees represent the top job providers. Now, this particular pub provides a special, unique service. They have live music in a superb natural world-class setting, excellent service, excellent food for a very reasonable price. And of course, we know how difficult it is to take our families out, to dinner these days, with dollars being as few as they are. All this could and would and should cease. Because if it doesn't, we're going to have another empty building, we'll have more unemployment. Those kids that work at CJ's during the summer to try to offset some of the obscene costs of college tuition won't be working there. I feel then that if we deny CJ's liquor license, they will have absolutely no... I feel then that if we deny CJ's liquor license, they will have absolutely no chance of paying back the money. And of course, then we'll have more political, economic, and human suffering. Now, you empower success or another failure here. I say into discord. There ought to be some kind of a payment plan, some kind of generation put together to give this building a chance to be useful again to the community, to have them pay the money that is owed from previous times, make some adjustments. I reminded the drug dealer from a town not far from here who shot a man who owed him fifteen dollars. Now, if he didn't expect this living, breathing, walking druggie to pay him the fifteen dollars alive, then how is he going to do it deceased? I'd like to end by saying that I wrote our governor a couple of times, and I didn't answer the first letter, but in the second letter, I included the fact I voted for him. So I did get an answer, not from him, but from one of his helpers. And Public Act Ninety-Eight has to do with the repeal of the helmet law. You're probably familiar with that. And my question was, why in the world would someone in their right mind repeal a law like that? Well, I have a whole list of nonsense here. But I just want to share two of them. Proponents say easing the helmet requirement will have a positive effect on the state's economy. Current law discourages out-of-state motorcycles from traveling to Michigan. I wish you'd come during bike time. And the last one on the list, proponents believe changes to the state's helmet laws are likely to increase tourism. On May twenty-second, I made this statement, that this town will survive on the basis of how many tourist dollars we bring here. In closing, a quote from someone you may be familiar with, and that's Benjamin Franklin. "When sense is wanting, everything is wanting." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please, Commissioner Spataro.
Just one comment. You know, I've been doing this for a while. And over the years, I've heard any number of people come in and tell us that government ought to be run like a business. And yet, when we have a situation where we're forced to run like a business, we're told, no, we have to make exceptions. No one wants to see a business fail. No one wants to see an empty building. My advice to this property owner is that this is, in fact, a viable business, which the last three years of records indicate it may not be a viable business. Then there might be somebody in the private sector who is willing to lend them the money to continue operations. But that's not a risk that the citizens and taxpayers of Muskegon ought to have to take on. And that's unfortunate, but that's reality. There is absolutely nothing in the record that would indicate that this deficit wouldn't be there and deeper this time next year, and we would be facing this again. We can't subsidize the business, I'm sorry. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other input from the Commissioners? Commissioner German?
I'd like to ask, have she been offered any type of payment plan to be paid, back taxes or anything like that?
Well, that's what she's been requesting.
Yeah.
And there's been some carryover from past years.
Right, two thousand and ten, okay.
Right. So, the situation has been ongoing. And then, Mr. Grant?
Couple of weeks ago, she offered a thousand dollars, but, and at the last meeting, I said, are you going to propose any payment plan? And I recommended that she come to the meeting, and I haven't heard anything. So, that was something that, I haven't heard anything but the thousand dollars. So I just wanted to let you guys know that it's the only thing I've heard from her since this has been going on.
Please, reapproach.
I requested that we be given the opportunity to set up a payment plan, offering the thousand dollars as a good faith, you know, down payment, so to speak. And I have not been given any indication that a payment plan would be accepted. This is what I was asking for, the opportunity to do that. No, there has been no offer of a repayment plan. Our plan was to give the thousand dollars in good faith and have this debt taken care of by the end of the summer. Typically, I've been general manager for the last five years. In December, we have ended every year, save for the first one, and that is a totally different story. But we've ended the last, you know, at the end of the year, we are in the black. But the cost of operating the business over the winter with absolutely no revenue coming in has caused us to start out behind. We catch up and get ahead in the end, but it's a hard juggle, and we haven't gotten it perfected yet. We're asking for more time. Quite honestly, if we don't open up, we do not have the money to pay back. If we open up, you know, at any time, if you feel we're not paying you back, you guys have all the control. The risk is in the, you know, not that we will fall further in debt to you, but that we won't be able to pay anything back at all until we sell.
Commissioner Turquest?
Ken, a question. When is the last time any kind of payment has been made to the items owed to the city?
Well, they caught up, they made some payments, I don't have them with me, but... They made some payments last year around this time, I believe, but after that, it's kind of...
As of December, we were completely square with the city.
No.
With the landlady.
Only with the landlady.
Okay, yep, that is correct. Because the two thousand and ten winter taxes, which has caused this big snowball effect, we thought that we had paid last spring. Because every spring you asked that we, our current, before you renew the liquor license, we thought that was taken care of. The liquor license renewed, we thought we were square, and it was bookkeeping error. When we paid our summer taxes last year, the two thousand and eleven summer taxes, no mention at all was made that, hey, are you going to pay anything on your winter taxes? We never received any delinquent notices on those winter taxes. We were unaware until this spring, when I approached Ken and said, okay, you know, what do we need to go and get this straight? You know, he said, oh, well, you owe this huge amount, and I had no idea where it came from. And granted, that's our bookkeeping error. And we're, you know, we take complete responsibility for that. But never, communication is a real issue here. We never received late notices for these delinquent taxes. We're not even aware that they were due because one hand thought that the other had paid it.
I disagree with that. We send out notices and...
We're not receiving, this is what I'm trying to say.
I have no control over the mail. We have, you know, every year that taxes are due.
Yes, and...
They don't go away if you don't receive a notice. We mail them out in a timely fashion. They do not come back to our office. So it's not our responsibility to hand-deliver the bill to them.
No, I understand that, and I'm not asking for that.
So I feel that our office and the city has done a fair job of notifying you of all the delinquent notices.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Commissioners, any other?
Just one comment.
Commissioner Spataro.
You know, this is the second time I've heard that particular argument made in this instance. I'm sorry, but you have a business that only generates revenue for about a four-month period. And I know folks come to Pier Marquette and they wonder, why isn't it all commercialized? Well, come down in February, and you'll see why. It's a very short season. And everything that's ever been talked about has been tried there. Amusement parks with roller coasters and Ferris wheels, campgrounds, retail outlets. It's all been tried there. The season's too short, and the access, because of the configuration of the streets that get to it, just make it unfeasible for most businesses to survive on anything other than a very short seasonal basis. So your business plan, if it's a realistic business plan, has to include covering your total expenses for the year based on the revenue you're getting for that short period of time. Now, you've said twice now, at two different meetings, that you're caught up at the end of the year, but you don't have any revenue coming in. Well, then you're not caught up. Because if you're not laying the money aside to pay your fixed expenses, utilities, taxes, lease, those things don't go away whether you're making a penny or not, then you don't have a viable business plan. And every year, we've seen that the deficit at this point in the year has gotten significantly higher. And if you're using this year's revenues to pay last year's bills, which is what the proposal is, then what will you use to pay this year's bills with? And how much more will the deficit be at that point? So at this point, our responsibility is to follow our policy and say, this is not a situation where we should make an exception to longstanding policy that every other business with a liquor license in this community is expected to follow. And I'm sorry, but that's just reality. Thank you.
We'll take the vote now.
Commissioner German?
What was the motion again, to deny?
To deny.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquest?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington? I'm sorry. Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, new business, item eight, please.
Rezoning request for property located at seventeen seventy-six Division Street, planning economic development. Summary request. Request to rezone the property located at seventeen seventy-six Division Street from R1 Single Family Residential District to B4 General Business District. Staff recommendation. Staff recommends denial of the request due to lack of compliance with the master plan, use plan, and zoning district intent. Committee recommendation. The planning commission voted to recommend denial of the request at their May tenth meeting. The motion was approved by a seven-to-one vote.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Galvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we deny the request to rezone property located at seventeen seventy-six Division Street.
Second. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galvin, supported by Commissioner Spataro, to deny the rezoning request for property located at one seven seven six Division Street. Any questions? Commissioners, comments? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquest?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other business, Commissioners? From the public participation...
Hello, Kathy Evans, West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission. I apologize for short notice. I am here today to ask for a letter of support for a grant proposal. The proposal is due Thursday. It is to the EPA's Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. And the project is to control the invasive, non-native plant fragmites, or common reed, which I think you've seen in some shoreline areas. It can grow to be about twelve feet tall. It invades natural habitat areas, takes over, provides no habitat value. A lot of people are upset with it because it obstructs the view of the lake from either their homes or from the Lakeshore Trail. And given all of the restoration work we've done in the city of Muskegon, on the south side of Muskegon Lake, there's not that extensive of a fragmites problem right now, except for in a stretch of area that we're restoring this summer anyway. This grant would not begin until fall this year. It would be an eighteen-to-twenty-four month process, and it would address the fragmites around Muskegon Lake on the south side as well as the north side, and all around Bear Lake as well, and some of the lower tributaries such as Green Creek and Bear Creek. So it's an important project to really maintain what we've done with restoration and to prevent additional loss of biodiversity along the shorelines within the Muskegon Lake and Bear Lake watersheds. I have some maps here, and I apologize that I only have six of them. But it's a work in progress. But you'll see the yellow lines on the north side of the lake are the areas with the most heavy kind of infestation of fragmites. This project is not just going to come in and control it with a subcontractor that we hire, but it's also going to address the education and information needs of landowners so that they can continue to provide the maintenance and stewardship activities into the future that will be required for us to make sure and keep this invasive plant from continuing to harm our wetlands. So that is why I'm here. I did draft a letter of support for the city, also one for Lakewood Township. The city of North Muskegon is going to be part of this as well. And I emailed it today to the mayor. So I have a hard copy of that, too, as an example, that I'll just pass along. And if you feel comfortable deciding that tonight or before Thursday, I can just work with staff or the mayor to see, or Brian, to see if we can get a letter of support for the proposal. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? If you just leave the letter so staff can review it, then we'll get in contact with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Felsky. Commissioners, I ask Mr. Felsky if he would join us tonight at the city commission meeting in regards to a request that I asked for last year and is going to request again this year. And that was for the Muskegon Big Red Football Team to be allowed to go out and try to, similar to the Band-Aid, to request some dollars for whatever they pass out for it. So, I don't know, if you wanted to add anything to it?
First of all, I'd just like to thank the city commission for the opportunity for me to get in front of you tonight, and to obviously thank the Mayor Wilmington for the opportunity last year for the football team of Muskegon High School to be included as, like we do for the Big Red Band, having what, from the communities I've previously been in, what we call Tag Day. And I will work with the mayor and the city commission to make sure that we follow all the rules and regulations of the city commission. If you will continue to allow us to have those opportunities for those organizations. Finishing my first year here, I've been working with a lot of the members of this commission and have had some opportunities to meet with our city manager here. And looking to do anything we can collaboratively to continue to move forward the progress of our city, and anything you can do to assist our children and our school district would be greatly appreciated. And just thank you for your time, and I'm sure there's many others who'd like to speak tonight. And if anybody has any additional questions, you can always feel free to contact me. Thank you very much. Appreciate you for the invitation tonight.
Thank you. Part of the reason why I want Mr. Felsky to be here is, well, first of all, I'll say that Coach Fairfield would have been here, but because, once again, this was kind of short notice on my part that there was a meeting tonight, he's got a daughter that's involved in tournament play, and so I told him that was more important than being at a city commission meeting. I didn't give Mr. Felsky the same opportunity that I gave the coach. But when we first met with Mr. Felsky, those being the public safety director and the city manager and myself, we talked about being more collaborative and working with, adding the school system, be a little bit more open than perhaps we've been, had happened in the past. And I recall Mr. Felsky saying that absolutely any opportunity, well, I won't say any, but an opportunity that came aboard, they were more than open to it. And what I do remember him saying is that the schools are the people's buildings, they aren't our buildings. And that stuck with me because I feel that the streets are the residents' streets, even though we watch over them. And as I watch our school system go through the same things that we've been going through here as far as trying to make difficult decisions that affect every single one of the young people and residents of our community, that I think that we need to reach out and assist them in any way possible. I think the high school football program, as well as the band program, and probably every other program that's within any public school, is very important to the students. And I understand that we can be saying, well, maybe we'll have the drama class come, and maybe we will, others come forward, and perhaps we will. The football program has a lot of heritage across the state and certainly in this community. The football program has a lot of heritage across the state and certainly in this community. And I think probably most important is the work that it does with the young men that are part of that program. The coaching staff at Muskegon over the years has been a very, very dedicated group of coaches, many that have taken these young men under arms and even into their homes. And this gives them an opportunity to go out, number one, understand what it takes to put on a program, to be a part of, being part of the investment into the team. And it also gives them an opportunity that many of them may not get, and that's to actually travel outside of the city of Muskegon and go somewhere to a football camp and interact with other school systems and other children, or young people. And it gives them plenty of opportunities. So I'm hoping that maybe the City Commission will consider doing that for the Big Red Program, and not only do it so that they don't have to come back every single year, that we can sort of grandfather clause them in with the band and the Goodfellows with the Muskegon Chronicle. So I'm hoping that someone would be at least open enough to make a motion. And we also know that they have to kind of fill out a special event for them. And once again, the mayor was a little lax in that, and I didn't share with Coach, but Coach did get time this afternoon before he went to the tournament play to get down and get an application. And hopefully, it's been returned. If not, I'm sure it'll be returned tomorrow. Commissioner Turnquist?
I certainly would move that we support the program. We support the Muskegon Public Schools. We support the tag programs and continue to work with the city in any way that we can help you.
Would that be a motion to allow the Muskegon Big Red Football Team to have a Tag Day on Friday, June 30th of 2012, and for it to be grandfather-cloused in with the Big Red Band and the Goodfellows?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's what I heard else.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, and I won't repeat it again. I think the clerk got that, supported by Commissioner Spataro, to allow that to happen. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And please let the coach know I'd be happy to work with the young people on June 30th and stand out on the corner and collect some money for the Big Reds. So, thank you so much. Mr. Olachek? I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. By me? Olachek.
I'm Marion Olachek, 690 Southern Avenue, and I'm also representing Nelson Community I come here late to get some information about this senior transit program that the city of Muskegon runs. As you know, in the, particularly in Nelson, NAMZ area, all the inner-city areas, we have quite a number of seniors, senior citizens here who are not really able to get around using public transportation, like buses and whatever. They may not have any children or any relatives here that can really help them. Many of them have children living out of town. And so they need some way to get out to the grocery stores, to the doctor appointments, therapy, all these different things that, just the normal run-of-things that we normally just take for granted, but when you get older, it becomes very, very hard to do. The city can give you thanks and credit for this, whatever. I'm going to credit care of many of your programs, I guess, and sometimes you really come up with some of these things. But this is one program that you really did wonder with. I mean, it's been running for about 20 years, and I'm sure that through the years, we have helped really thousands and thousands of people here. But now, I understand that we just recently came to our attention that the city wants to discontinue this program. And we were trying to get some information via from the people at City Hall. I guess we're getting too many conflicting points of view, too much conflicting information over here. I wanted to find out exactly what is the current status of this program. I know it is funded by CDVG funds and also from the fairs, partly from the fairs that you get from the writers. But I just wonder, is the thing completely done? Are you just allocating the funds here? Just what, what step, or what point are you at right now in this particular program with the CDVG funds and senior transit?
Well, as far, and I don't see a need here, but the Community Development Block Grant Funds, we voted to allocate those, what, two months ago? So that part of it's been done. That was part of that public hearing process. And the reason that this program was cut is that, you know, I'll be blunt, elections have consequences. And for 32 years collectively as a country, we have consistently voted for people to cut our taxes and to shrink government, and they have been doing that. And our allocation from the federal government in their current budget for Community Development Block Grants was cut by 40 percent. There just isn't money. So we have been making, and people who come to our work session next month will see our budget. There's not much there anymore. We have over 100 fewer employees. We have less revenue now than we did in 2002. And that's not going to get any better because the Community Development Block Grant Funding from the federal government keeps getting cut, and the revenue sharing from the state keeps getting cut. And ultimately, that's what funds programs like this. I would guess, and I'm sure anybody can speak for themselves, there's not one person here, including myself, who thinks that this is a program that deserves to be cut. This is not something we would do lightly. But if there's no money, there's no money. And that's where we've reached. This is, this is where we are in having to cut things. We've already cut all the youth programs. We've already cut many, many other things that benefited other pieces of the state.
How much money actually is the city going to be getting this time around from CDVG?
Eight hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay. And how, who actually did they allocating on all of this anyway?
The City Commission made the final determination. There is a...
But for someone, someone...
There's a committee, there's a committee that's made up of one city commissioner and a group of citizens that are on the, on the committee. They make a recommendation. City staff makes a recommendation, then it is brought forward to the City Commission, and the City Commission makes the final determination on that budget. Now, I would tell you that it's still part of the budget process. But, so, as far as it being final-final, I don't know that it's final-final, but certainly the CDVG funding portion of it, we made a decision that we just couldn't afford to do that program any longer. It's a program that costs...
Almost seventy thousand.
Almost seventy thousand dollars a year for a program. And as Commissioner Spataro said, it's not anything that anybody, including staff, wants to do. It's one of those services that was provided back when government apparently thought we were healthy. And unfortunately, now it's, it's there, as Larry said, similar to the youth programs that we've cut in the past, positions that we've cut. It's, it's not enjoyable.
Well, is this, is this program completely funded and by CDVG? That's the only funding they get?
What's the...
Can I answer? You want me to answer? The senior transit program is a part of the general fund budget, and it's, in the past, traditionally has been funded really by three areas. The CDVG, which has been about forty-five thousand dollars, so a lion's share of that program has been funded by CDVG. And then it's been funded by the general fund and the equipment fund.
Well, I don't know. I mean, forty-five thousand, eight hundred forty, what is it, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, whatever that was. I don't know. It just seems to me that it's kind of strange that we can find money in the city to send staff people to seminars and whatever, and yet we can't find the funds to, so some little old lady can get herself some groceries down at the grocery store, especially in Muskegon where they have to travel halfway around the county to get to the store to begin with. I would think that we just, we just have our priorities straight over here. I don't know. I'm just, I'm not trying to criticize you.
Oh, you understand.
You have a budget problem here. But I think that if it's not final-final, I think you're going to hear a lot more from some of the people that are into this program. We have at least a couple hundred, I understand, that are in it on a regular basis, and probably another couple hundred that are in a part-time basis, plus some others. And I don't think they're going to be too happy about losing something like this. I don't know. It seems you ought to be able to find some funding somewhere. And maybe you might have to turn the program back a little, but I don't know, for a city of this type, the problems we have for our seniors here, I think we can do a lot better. I'm sorry, I just, that's the best I can say about it.
Well, we thank you for taking time to come here, but let's also not forget that senior services is not the only public transportation that's available to folks within the community. There are other ones available, albeit, I'll admit that it's, it's more expensive, but this is a subsidized program at a dollar fifty a trip. Everyone in this room probably fills their gas tank up at least every two weeks to understand what the price of fuel is. But, so that you know, there is a work session, I believe, on June 11th, when the budget will be discussed. And certainly, we're here to listen to the citizens' input as to what they want to see. And the public hearing is on the 12th, the following day, Tuesday, the City Commission meeting. Both of those are at 5:30.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. The reason I come before you this evening is to let you know officially as a governmental body that I am running for Judge Graves' open seat in the 14th Judicial Circuit this year. This is an open seat after Judge Graves has served our county for 35 years on the bench as one of the best judges that I've ever been in front of. I've practiced in front of him for almost 20 years, trying cases regularly for the Muskegon County Prosecutor's Office. He's been someone that I've admired, and he does a very, very good job for our community. This campaign that I'm about to embark on is really not about me, it's about our community. The next couple minutes, I'm going to talk about myself, and it may seem like it's about me, but really, it's about what's good for Muskegon County. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. My father worked for General Motors for 33 years. He put me through law school. I'm married. I've been married for about 19 years. My wife, Linnea, and I have two children, Joe and Kate. I graduated from Michigan State University in 1987. I graduated from University of Detroit School of Law in 1991. I worked while in law school with the Urban Law Clinic, which was a program in the city of Detroit that helped out indigent defendants. My first criminal jury trial was as a defense lawyer, defending an indigent client in the city of Detroit. Right out of law school, I worked for a firm, a large civil law firm in the city of Detroit that basically handled civil medical malpractice defense. In the fall of 1992, I joined the Muskegon County Prosecutor's Office, and since that time, I've also volunteered in our community in many ways, coaching boys and girls, basketball, football, baseball. I am a member of Saint Francis de Sales Catholic Church, where I'm a volunteer lecturer. I have also volunteered for the United Way of Lake Shore because I think that organization positively impacts our community in a great way. I've also participated in the crime prevention program, which puts me in front of seventh and eighth graders, speaking about making wise choices and how that can impact their lives and prevent crime. For every day for the last 20 years professionally, I've opened the courthouse doors and tried cases in Muskegon County. As an assistant prosecutor, I've tried murderers and robbers and rapists and drug dealers and done my very best to keep our community safe. But it's that kind of experience that I have that puts me in a position to be able to make the right decisions. And I think it's important, when we talk about experience in the trenches, that's real experience. That's real experience making tough decisions. That's real experience making the right decisions when somebody threatens our community by committing a violent crime. It's a real decision to say you're going to go to the Department of Corrections. I do not take that lightly, and nobody should. And if you do, you're going to fail at the job that I'm asking to be put in. I also have the experience and the integrity and the compassion to make the right decision when somebody needs a jail diversion program. I've worked with the Internet Agency Jail Divergent Program with the sheriff and community mental health, and I know that not everybody needs to be locked up. And you need the experience to make that right decision as well. So in closing, I submit to you that I have the fairness, the independence, and the compassion and the experience to do the best job with the gifts that God has given me, to make the best 14th Circuit Court judge that I can be. And I'm going to ask for your support. I have a burning desire to bring that experience to this community. I have a burning desire to be the next 14th Circuit Court Judge because I think it's the right thing for our community, not for me, but for our community. And I thank you for your time this evening, and I would thank you for your support. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Strava.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mills?
I'm surprised I'm up already. I thought I would be following someone, or someone's plural. Hello, your holiness. Anyway...
Name and address, please.
Dan Mills. I live here on Earth, actually, North Muskegon, phone 445-1817, Mills, Auburn, in North Muskegon. Anyway, mainly the reason I wanted to speak is just to let you know that the signatures you're getting on Petition's tonight are probably substantial. List isn't complete because I have several pages at home, over 100. And doggone it, I saw those things this morning. My wife had them laid out, and after I got back home from work, I can't hide them anywhere. And, you know, I ask you to forgive me. I just spent the last several days in Chicago doing forced marches. And if you want to know where your money is going, it's going to the military establishment. There was lots of military there, and wars cost money, and the wars that were aging on our city streets as well. Shutting down Chicago wasn't cheap. And of course, the prison industrial complex is taking our money, too. And so that's called austerity, and we'll have to get used to that because that's the trend these days. Yeah, anyway, so I just want to let you know that there are more signatures than you'll be receiving tonight, that's number one. The other thing is I want my money back. You know, I got a form of information, estimate, $150 dollar dollar stroke for a $300 bill. When I paid that right here about a month or two ago, I got another letter in the mail saying, well, Andy's going up to $750. And I haven't heard a damn thing since then, so I want my money back right now. Thank you.
Ms. Price? Mr. Mills, sit down, please. Mr. Mills, we're conducting a meeting. Please sit down. Please sit down. The treasurer's office is not open at this time, Mr. Mills. Services rendered, services paid. Ms. Price? Ms. Price?
Hi. I'm Cynthia Price, 1357 West Summit, Muskegon, Roosevelt Park, Michigan. And I'm here tonight to present some signatures concerning the Sappi paper mill site, now owned by Melching Inc., that we've been, that basically a handful of people have done a great job and a lot of work in getting these signatures over the past month or so. And we, I'm not going to read you the whole petition, it's rather lengthy, but basically, it just asks the city to support, first, a full cleanup of the site, and, secondly, sustainable development, that's in keeping with the city's master plan, to whatever degree that falls under your jurisdiction. And the petitions that I'll be turning over include three hundred and seventy-five that we got online, and we also have printed out some of the comments. And I'm not going to go over three minutes, so I'm going to just read. One of them, which is actually from a former city commissioner, that says, "Why spend a great amount of time on a master plan if you are not going to follow it? Don't let this golden opportunity slip by to insist on a positive direction for the lakeshore." And that is all. Oh, and we got eight hundred and ninety-nine, plus some that Dan Mills can't find, apparently. And there are other outstanding petitions as well, but I don't really know the numbers. They could be as small as nine, or they could be as large as a couple hundred. So I don't know if anybody actually wants to receive these petitions.
Please hand them to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to address the commission tonight?
Hello, I'm Shanti Davey, 4380 Hackley Point Lane, Norton Shores, Michigan. Well, I hope you really take the petitions seriously, and like I've always said before, I really would like the community and our leaders and the business community to work together to find solutions to Sappi as we go along that keeps everybody safe and healthy, including future workers. And I really hope that this senior transit thing is disturbing to me. You know, a nation that does not take care of its seniors, its elderly, its children, its sick, is a very, very bad situation, and we are headed in that direction as a nation. I hope that Muskegon can use its vast creativity and intelligence to not go with the flow of the nation in our state, find creative solutions. I turned in a proposal for county banking to the county a couple months ago. Nothing has been done. North Dakota has been having a state bank for over a hundred years. They have never been in the red. They are in the black, and they have a lot of money to fund many programs in their state. Michigan, we can't do a state one because of our laws, but we can do county ones, and we may even be able to do city ones. And the banking laws, the way they are, we could make a lot of money for our city and our county and be in the black and have programs. But we need to reach in and find alternative and creative solutions. And I really hope that we can. I hope that there's still humanity left in you politicians to work together with people who have great ideas, because this city and this county is full of people that are creative and intelligent, including new people. So I'm hoping that's the direction we can take.
Ms. Davey, Shanti, could you tell me, does Norton Shores have senior transit service?
You know, I don't know.
Well, I do.
I'm just learning about my government.
I do. They don't. They don't. The only community that has even offered it over all the years is the city of Muskegon.
Well, Norton Shores has a store that people can go to, and people have to go to the store, you know, kind of on the fringes of Muskegon. Myers, where everyone goes shopping there.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, there are people that live in Norton Shores. Norton Shores is a much larger square mile area than the city of Muskegon is. And I'm not faulting any of the other communities for not having it. I just find it strange that a community that has provided a service now is getting their hands spanked because they don't have the funding to do it when other communities across this country don't provide the service to begin with.
Well, I don't mean to be spanking you. I'm just saying...
Sometimes I like spanking.
Well, I'm...
Well, I don't know where you folks were going, but when I was saying that spanking got me going in the right direction. So all of you that were laughing, you consider where you were going there.
Well, I'll be keeping that in mind at every meeting, and I am going to start going to Norton Shores, so meetings, because I do live there. But anyway, I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Shanti. Is there anyone else who would care to address the commission?
I had a turn. Do I have to call another piece of...
Just step up and keep within your three minutes, please. Before you give your name and address again, please.
Okay, I'm Robert Jennings, and I live at 3553 Arena View Point. This has probably already been discussed someplace, but I've just gotten back into the community a short time ago. Have a question about the allied waste collection contract the city entered into. It was unanimous, all of you. May I ask, and all my information comes from the Chronicle on this, by the way, the piece in the paper said that there was a poll or something, or just ask yourselves here, if you had an opportunity for a poll, if you live in Muskegon, or how did that statement come about? And again, it may not be factual, but you have a tenure contract, is that correct?
We will.
With allied?
We will, yes.
Okay. With some provisions for increases and decreases and that kind of thing. But the statement in the paper said that the customers were satisfied, and I'm wondering, what research did you do? Where did that statement come from before you all voted for that contract? Yeah, I didn't receive anything.
I don't know. We'd have to review to see who made that comment. I can't, I don't believe...
Well, I believe it was the president. Again, my information comes from the Chronicle, but I wasn't asked, and I sure would have enjoyed some input.
Well, you've got your opportunity. What is your input?
Well, firstly, I pay for the recycling. Now, there were about ten people on my street that recycled. Well, now you have to pay for it, and I'm only one. Okay, the wind always blows, despite what the opponents of wind power contend, and after our refuse is picked up and recycling is picked up, I have to go out and pick up bottles and cans and papers. I live on the end of the street. Sometimes they get me, sometimes they don't. I call to the office, and it's a very complicated matter just to tell them firstly that I was skipped, and then secondly, to have someone come out, which is a trip that should not have to be made in the first place. So, and I know that that's, that happens, the blowing of the refuse, and when they just dump this thing up, you know, in other places as well, because I'm out there on my walks picking that stuff up. I would appreciate finding out where that information originated, if it is factual. Now, if it isn't, then it isn't. But I'd like to know, you know, where that came from, that the customers were extremely satisfied to the point that you folks could give them, on a unanimous vote, a tenure contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to the commission tonight? Boy, I would have said six o'clock for sure.
My name is Kenneth Arnold, 2479 Wesley. I would like for the commissioners to have some idea of the depth of our program on senior transit. I'm going to just talk about the first four months of this year. January, we had five hundred and eighty-eight rides. February, six hundred and twenty-three. March, six hundred and forty-eight. And April, six hundred and forty, which comes up for the first start of this year with twenty-four hundred and ninety-nine rides, twenty-five hundred rides. Projected would be roughly seven thousand four hundred and ninety-two rides for the year, generating eleven hundred and twenty-three dollars, or eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars in revenue for the city. Now, I know that no way covers the program. I realize it must be somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-five thousand a year. But I think it's very vital, and you should take all this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Yes?
My name is Eddie Savage. I'm with the senior citizen program. And speaking of Norton Shores, you've got to realize that Norton Shores is a high-income area, the city of Muskegon. We have a very, very high poor income, limited income of us senior citizens. And most of our citizens are mothers, grandmothers, and fathers that need transportation to and from the doctor to buy their groceries, anything. Now, you might think you're lucky right now, but eventually, sometime, you're going to become unlucky and physically encapitated and going to need the senior citizen program, whether you believe it or not. The money should not overcome the services which we provide. We provide a good service, and you shouldn't let the finances of money overshadow the services. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who cares to address the commission tonight? Seeing none? Mr. Alshutel, please.
If you could get a chance to, I think I asked Ann to pass on those colors of the card, if you can, if you would take a look at them and see if you're disagreeing with us, or this is what...
I don't know what color you picked.
The color of your card.
Got that Muskegon big red color there.
The allied waste card?
Yes. Those are the new garbage cards that they will be distributing.
Well, I have completed.
Thank you.
Perfect. I think the color you picked is probably perfect. What do you think?
I'm sure.
Yeah, looked good to me. Did we get a consensus? Could we all agree on that?
Yeah.
Boy, we're getting good at that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, no, hold on. Commissioners, I'm going to share a little story with you that about ten and a half, eleven years ago, I was asked by a few friends to step up and run for mayor of the city of Muskegon, and I did that. And over the last ten and a half years, it's been a pure pleasure to have been served as mayor. But I'm telling my fellow city commissioners that effective June 30th of this year, I will be retiring. I will be sixty-two in the middle of June. And when I was a younger man, I had always hoped that I would, you know, be able to retire at fifty-five and do things. And I'm not going to be able to retire from two jobs at sixty-two. But I feel that I'm going to go on, not hopefully to the final chapter, but to the next chapter in my life. A good friend of mine, a good friend of this community, Stan Tyler, told me probably sixteen or seventeen years ago, when he was beginning to wind down out of his own business and pass it on to his son, and I asked Stan one night when we were sitting at the Marine Tap Room why he was doing that. And he said, "I probably got about ten or twelve years of being able to do what I want to do and being healthy and doing that." And unfortunately, Stan only lived about three or four more years. Now, I'm hoping that doesn't happen to me naturally, but it does happen. And I've made a decision, I've fought with it long and hard, but it's right, and it's the right decision for me at this time. And so, effective going into fiscal year 2013, I will be down to one position and on into a new chapter in my life. And prior to that, I will cry my way through my goodbyes, but I wanted to let you know. Mr. Hood, would you like to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.